Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with, well, all council members will be present in a moment. So with that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. So our first item tonight is item 2A, which is Special Recognition, a proclamation recognizing Women's Equality Day. And we have a shared reading of that proclamation beginning, we have Mayor Protem Nguyen and council members Green and Madrone.
Whereas in 1972, Congress designated August 26th as Women's Equality Day to commemorate the certification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution, which guarantees that the right to vote shall not be denied on the basis of sex. And whereas, the 19th Amendment was certified due to the sacrifices and tireless work of women from every state, race, cultural, and religious backgrounds. And whereas, now over a century after the certification of the 19th Amendment, many women still face barriers to voting, particularly women who are of color, immigrant, LGBTQ+ disabled, and otherwise marginalized. And whereas, despite working to pass the 19th Amendment, women of color were effectively denied the right to vote through state laws, violence, and discrimination for another 45 years until the passage of the Voting Rights Act in 1965. And whereas, Black women continue to lead the way in communities that are most impacted and continue to protect voting rights and build communities and policies that are equitable and safe for all. And whereas, while the fight for women's equality has always been grounded in the right to vote, a century after it was first introduced, the fight to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment still continues. And whereas, one year after Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health Center Supreme Court decision, multiple states have attacked the right to bodily autonomy for women and those who can become pregnant. And whereas, the state of Washington leads the country in accessible and equitable voting rights, thanks to legislation centering accessible voter registration, mail-in ballots, and restoring voting rights for individuals convicted of a felony who have served their time. And whereas, Washington State has created an address confidentiality program, allowing people fleeing gender-based violence to register to vote without fear of allowing their abusers to see their address. People in this program are provided a substitute mailing address that can be used to register to vote and other government-creating records. And?
Whereas, over three-quarters of women responding to a 2022 YWCA USA survey were united in supporting policy solutions that end gender-based violence and support local domestic violence services. And whereas, paid family leave is a top priority for most women, but particularly women of color. Over three-quarters of Asian Pacific Islander American Indigenous and Latina women said passing a federal paid leave law is one of their top 10 priorities for Congress. And now therefore be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim August 26th, 2025, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Olympia and celebrates the continued effort for equality for all women and the removal of barriers to the resources, support, and opportunities women need to live thriving and healthy lives. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 12th day of August 2025, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to call up Ally Ewing, the co-executive director of the YWCA, for a few words. No little ones this year?
No little ones to tie my ankles together, unfortunately. Never a dull moment with those two. Thank you, Mayor Payne and the Olympia City Council for having me here today. I was honored to co-write this proclamation two years ago, so this is my third year getting to meet with you all. And my name is Ally, are you she and her pronouns? And just a few weeks ago, we celebrated our 80th birthday. The YWCA of Olympia was founded here in 1945. And last week, Mayor Payne had lunch with youth in our different Canvas camp. And youth were eager to learn about civic engagement and making our world a more equitable place by learning right here in Olympia how to get involved with community organizing and advocacy. And we are proud to be serving almost three times as many kids as we were last year. But the truth is that with the current climate hate and hostility that is being shown towards the marginalized groups that we serve, and with far less funding than we've had in last years, we may not be here to receive this next year. We may not be around to see our 81st birthday and celebrate women's equality and the steps that we have taken as a community to create a more equitable home here for marginalized women and marginalized folks across our community. At YWCA Olympia and in YWCA's across the country, we work every day to eliminate racism and empower women in ways that are responsive to the communities that we serve. We know firsthand what women, gender expansive people and families and communities need to thrive. This recent Y Women Vote National Survey confirms what we hear every day, that women are united in calling for policies that address economic opportunity, caregiving, gender-based violence, health, and racial justice. And we're honored to get to uplift these needs of folks here in our community. These findings give policymakers from City Hall to Congress a clear blueprint for ensuring that everyone can live safely and thrive. Our mission demands that we center the voices of women and girls of color, who are often, too often overlooked in decision-making. Our votes determine the direction of our community for years to come. From the care we can access to how our governments invest in childcare, victim services, and so much more. And that's why we're committed to ensuring everyone, especially women of color, young women, and historically marginalized communities, to exercise their hard-won right to vote. I want to close with gratitude for those who fought to expand voting access and representation. And while we've made progress, barriers remain and in many places are increasing across the nation. Our community's well-being is tied to the well-being of those most impacted by oppression here and everywhere. At YWCA Olympia, we will keep shining a light on these power imbalances and work towards a future and a present day where all people are valued, live free from oppression, and thrive in a just society. And if you're in this room or you're attending on Zoom, and if anything that you heard in the proclamation or you're hearing me say matters to you, we need you. We need your support. We need your advocacy. And we need funding because we are in a moment that we haven't seen before. And I really want to be here to be able to have this conversation with you next year and many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you, Mayor Payne.
Are there any comments from council? Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for, you know, your past efforts in co-creating and writing this really beautiful proclamation. Thank you for recognizing that the 19th Amendment was so wonderful, and it was not all women, and that's really important. And also for sharing, just so rawly, the reality of what's going on, you know? And so I didn't realize that I wasn't able to go to your birthday party for the YWCA. That was a bummer to be out of town for that. But I didn't realize how dire it is right now for the organization, a really value-added organization in our community, not only for the work that you do, but also for the work that the organization does to partner with other people, right? And so I know that, you know, I individually, as a community member, could donate, and I don't think it's going to be that, I mean, I think I probably should, still should, but I don't think it's going to be what sets you over, you know? And so thank you for telling us about that, and I will talk with my colleagues and, you know, figure out what like, what can support look like and maybe have another conversation about that. We've really valued your partnership as well, so I'm so sorry for this moment, and thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. And thank you to the women on the city council for reading the proclamation so eloquently. I'm really proud that we have strong women leaders in our community, and often even the majority of the city council is a woman majority, and that's what Olympia is. And this is a fight that we all take on together. And I'm getting snickered at, I wonder if I said something wrong? No, not me. Okay. It wasn't me. I'm sorry, I shouldn't pay attention and just say my words. Last week, I had the opportunity to tell my 13-year-old daughter about the YWCA. She is very dead-set that every girl should have equitable access to period supplies. And we've been looking at different models around the country and even around our own region. In fact, we found one in Lewiston and Clarkston where they take orders and they deliver a little bag with a motivational message and the supplies you need to the girls at the school every month. And she said, "How do we do this?" And I said, "Well, we should start by asking the YWCA what's going on in our community and where there might be a role for some of her friends to play a part in a project like this." And she was like, "Whoa, what's the YWCA?" And it was very simple to say, "It's a women's rights organization that is really important in our community." And share the website, and now we'll have an ongoing conversation about, well, we've already had an ongoing conversation about the need for this work, but now who does this work is just as an important part of it, and we need you in our community. So I hope everyone hears this message, will reach out and do a little bit they can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Ally, it's always good to see you here. I think you do a fine job representing, you know, the women of our community who really are feeling the sting of the moment that we're in, and I appreciate your words a lot. You know, I've been, the last few days, I've been in a, you know, a little bit of a dark space in terms of a cloud and, you know, just questioning, like, how did we get here? Where are we headed? You know, what are the signs of a declining democracy? And I think we all can, many of us feel that, especially those of us who are marginalized based on our identities. And I do see things that I've never seen before, as you alluded to in your comments, things like Christian nationalist pastors on television talking about how women should not vote, but that their households should vote. That was pretty shocking to see that on national television, to actually hear something like that be said so openly and freely. And while we have the right to free speech in this country, it doesn't mean that those words don't cause damage to a lot of women and girls across the country, and those of us who love them. So I just thank you for the work that you're doing and the YWCA. It's not over till it's over. You know, it's, this is a man's world, but it'd be nothing without a woman or a girl, as the song goes, and I think that means that it's a woman's world, that we could all do better to learn to respect the mother. So thank you for being one, and thank you for being a fine one to come here and represent Olympia already well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a proclamation here for you that's signed, and if you could come up front here, we'll go ahead and take a photo. And family or anyone else who wants to join, please do. All right. Thank you, everybody. Can we give it up one more time for the wonderful women on council and our city staff? We appreciate you so much. Thank you. All right, so we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is item 2B, which is also a Special Recognition Proclamation Recognizing Overdose Awareness Day. And we have a reading of that proclamation by councilmember Cooper.
Whereas, no community in Washington State is immune to accidental or intentional overdose and drug overdose deaths remain high across the state, impacting urban, suburban, and rural communities and disproportionately affect marginalized populations. And whereas, overdose deaths are preventable and can be caused by alcohol, over-the-counter medicine, stimulants, and opioids. And whereas, like many places across Washington State, we need to continue to treat drug-related harm as a public health issue and invest in best practices that save lives and build communities. And whereas, observed on October 31st, every year, International Overdose Awareness Day seeks to create a better understanding of overdose, reduce the stigma of drug-related deaths, and create the change that reduces the harms associated with drug use. And whereas, International Overdose Awareness Day is an opportunity for all Olympians to stand beside those who have lost loved ones to an overdose and those who have substance use disorder and are diligently working towards recovery. And whereas, anyone can visit the statewide resource www.stopoverdose.org or obtain naloxone, an opioid overdose reversal medication, and the recovery helpline at 1-866-789-1511 for 24-hour information and help. And now therefore be it resolved, the city, Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim August 31st, 2025, as International Overdose Awareness Day in the city of Olympia and call upon the community to join in raising awareness of drug overdose morbidity and mortality by reducing stigma through education, prevention, treatment, and recovery support for substance use disorder. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 12th day of August 2025, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Cooper. At this time, I'd like to call up the assistant to the city manager, Susan Grisham. Hi, Susan.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, Susan Grisham, Assistant to the City Manager. I'm also here with my youth council liaison hat. So as discussed in the proclamation, overdose awareness day is a time for us to pause and remember the lives lost, support people in our community who might be, who may be grieving, and to stand with those who are working towards recovery. It's also a reminder that overdose is a public health issue, one that takes all of us working together to address. So tonight, I'd like to first introduce Katie Strojek of the opioid, who is the opioid response coordinator with Thurston County Public Health, who'll share some more information about the work the county is doing around overdose. And then we'll hear from our youth council chair, Nolan O'Connell, and youth council member, Shuthi Lingam-Natamai, who will speak regarding the youth council-led public service announcement that they created with the assistance of some of our communication staff, and that will debut to you all this evening. So with that, I'll hand it over to Katie.
Thank you. Katie Strojek, opioid and overdose response program manager at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. I first want to say thank you tonight for city council doing this proclamation again this year. It's been multiple years in a row now that Olympia City Council has done this proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day, and we're really lucky to have all of our jurisdictions participate on an annual basis. International Overdose Awareness Day is extremely important to me, both personally and professionally. I'm a person with lived experience, and I also have worked in this field for the last 10 years. Over the last 10 years, and even beyond that into my teenage years, I've seen us lose community members, program participants, I've lost more friends than I can count, I've seen my friends lose loved ones, significant others, and I also have had to respond to my friends' overdoses, where luckily, none of them became fatal, but they overdosed in my own house, and I was the one to administer naloxone. I understand firsthand the grief that comes with overdose loss, as well as the tremendous stress in an overdose response situation. It's not something that we take lightly at public health, and we understand that it's not a one-time event. It's something that carries on with you whether or not that overdose becomes fatal or not. We're really lucky in Thurston County to have a robust Thurston County opioid response task force that does a ton of work around prevention, treatment, pregnant and parenting, and overdose response efforts. At Public Health, we offer free overdose response trainings in the community to train organizations, nonprofits, businesses, community members. And for the last few years now, we've done over 100, if not 125, on an annual basis with tremendous amounts of community members at each ones of those. We have tons of naloxone distribution points in the community now. We also just offered a naloxone vending machine as of last week at Franklin Street Harm Reduction, where there will be no barrier 24-hour access to naloxone for our community members, which is a huge accomplishment for us here locally. We're having our International Overdose Awareness Day event on Wednesday, August 27th, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Heritage Park. There will be a bunch of ways to memorialize folks, to process overdose grief, to remember those who have been lost, to share stories about overdose experience, overdose response efforts, to get free naloxone, educational materials, and just connect. We've seen that the biggest thing when we look at overdose grief and the trauma that our community has experienced with overdose loss is really just making sure that we're continuing to talk about it and not staying silent about that loss. It's a tremendous loss for folks to go through, and we really want to make sure that we're bringing light to those individuals who have lost their lives to overdose and show that the community is wrapped around folks and that we really care and want to address this public health crisis altogether. So I really appreciate city council doing the proclamation tonight, as well as our partnership that we've been able to do with the youth council. We're so excited about that. Youth have been a priority population for us, and this has been a new way for us to reach youth, using youth voices, and it's something that we've really heard from youth in our community, that they want to hear information from other youth and not from adults about overdose response. And they don't want to be left out of the conversation anymore because it's their peers also that they're seeing die from overdoses. So thank you again.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any questions or comments for Katie before we move on? All right, seen none. Thank you. Hi, Nolan. Hi, Shuthi.
Hi, Mayor Payne. I'm Shuthi Lingam-Natamai, the policy vice chair for the Olympia Youth Council.
And I am Nolan O'Connell, and I'm the chair of Olympia Youth Council.
So on the youth council, we recognize that we have a lot of peers or multiple peers that have lost their lives to overdoses. And this reality is incredibly sad. It's really sad that we have to see our peers have to go through something that becomes out of their control. And there's a huge stigma about overdoses that just isn't nearly talked about enough. With recent news, I mean, there are overdose medications such as naloxone can be put in jeopardy, and we just have to realize that we need to make more awareness on overdoses, and it's something that we can't, it's something that we have to keep in our minds because if we don't, then the issue will only get worse. So the youth council made a PSA, a one-minute-long video highlighting overdoses and the importance is to speak up about it, because if not us, then who will?
All right. Without further ado, we'd like to play the video for y'all.
Overdoses are happening here, in our community.
To our neighbors.
To our families.
And to our friends.
122 fatal overdoses were recorded in our community in 2023.
One lethal dose of opioid can be smarter than a granite sand.
It's invisible to the naked eye.
This is a reality.
When someone overdoses, their skin turns cold, their breathing slows, their lips turn blue, the clock starts ticking. But we have the power to change the ending.
Naloxone can reverse an overdose in two to three minutes.
This isn't just an accessory, it's essential.
The good Samaritan law protects you.
Speak up, step up. No one gets in trouble for saving a life.
Know the signs.
Carry naloxone.
Save lives.
The power is ours.
And big shout-out for Jolynn for making all this possible and editing the whole thing.
Thank you both so much. What a fantastic job. Wow. Any comments from the council? Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Great job, both of you and your colleagues. This is so exciting. I get so excited when youth council members come here, and I've been noticing how you two have been just stepping up every opportunity I've really enjoyed. We have more to come, but I've enjoyed doing youth council interviews with you the last couple of nights. That's been really fun, and you two want to make sure that people meet muster, because it's very important. So that's been fun to see. This is such a great PSA. When I, when I, well, you were on the call, but when I heard about, I was like, 60 seconds, what's going to happen in 60 seconds? And, but it is so wonderful. You two were, if I'm not mistaken, you two were also part of the, I think we're calling it like the youth liaisons when the council wasn't created yet, right? And so we had worked with a big group of young people to figure out, like, what does a youth council that they envisioned, like, what does that look like for the city of Olympia? What could be sustainable, successful, and you two were part of building that? Am I right, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And so now, it's like you were, you were helping inform, like, how to get young people access, right? To access to opportunities, access to spreading awareness, policy changes. I mean, you're the vice chair of the policy subcommittee, that's so cool. And so now you have a different responsibility as youth council members, right? So you have access and you have resources, and now you have responsibility of what to do with that privilege. And this is such a great example of what you're doing with that privilege, and I'm so excited about it. I'm excited for us, for you, and just our community. So thank you so much. I've also, along with my other councilmates, we've been keeping apprised of, like, what are the things that you got cooking, and I'm so excited for what's all to come. So thank you. Well done.
Thank you. Councilmember Madrone. Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you both so much for being here tonight. Hi, Nolan. Nice to see you. I just wanted to say that that video is so beautifully done, and I know that it is in response to a tragedy that happened in our community. And it's just so powerful when something like that happens, and people mobilize around it and say, how can we save a life? Save lives in the future, prevent something like this from happening? And I think that the message that you guys pulled together is spot-on, the video is beautifully done. I can imagine this being shown all over the place with young people, actually, people of all ages, so that we can, we can save lives. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Gilman.
I'll just echo the thanks. And you are reliable messengers, you are trusted voices, right? And it's really important, I think, that you're willing to speak up along with your colleagues on the Council. And I hope that you can just keep working for us to say that there's no stigma, this is a healthcare issue, and that you're each empowered to intervene in somebody's crisis. That's, that's huge. I'm really grateful for your courage and your good work. Thanks.
Councilmember Vanderpool, followed by Councilmember Green.
Yeah, I, I'm going to echo a lot of what my councilmates are saying. I'm very impressed by the work. I really am. And I'm always impressed every time I try to sneak in to see what you guys are doing. And every time I do, you're all business, you're always working on something. The first meeting I came into, you had gotten a plan together and got it all done before, with like 20 minutes to spare. Very impressive work. And one time I came in to check on you, and you were all in different caucuses, working on different stuff in different rooms. And so the amount of work, and the amount of interest in subjects, and the amount of investment you're doing in the community is exceedingly impressive. And I, and I, and I see future leadership in this, and I really do appreciate all you're doing. And I'm, and you keep setting the bar high, so appreciate you.
Councilmember Green.
I just want to echo, you know, everything from my colleagues. I'm so grateful to you two and to the entire Youth Council for doing this. Seeing things like this, especially as the parent of, we'll say, one of your peers, as a young person, you know, knowing that my kids will hear messages like this from their peers, because I'm not afraid to date myself and say that when I heard these messages in, in my school, it was dare, right? Yeah, there was the frying pan, there was drug abuse resistance education, which I'm sure was a very noble effort, but did not have the impact that, you know, messages like this coming from, you know, people their age and produce so well. So just super kudos. Thank you for doing everything that you're doing and being leaders on this and so many issues through Youth Council.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right. Amazing job. You two are always out front, leading the way. It's always good to see you. I, I keep thinking about what your college resumes are going to look like, and I'm like, wow, you're going to be competitive. I, thank you, first of all, for doing this. I, I can't express enough how grateful I am to know that we have young people in this community who cared very deeply about what happened to a fellow community member, and did something with that, and said, let's send that message, and let's echo it to every young person in our community. And I will tell you that it has the ability to not just affect young people, but to affect people who are older as well. And never underestimate the power of an older person seeing a young person talk about such a mature subject. I think that has a powerful way of influencing even adults. So thank you for doing your part in that. I think that our Youth Council is very impressive in everything that you've done up until this point. All things from looking at our comprehensive plan chapters, very dense stuff, to things like this, which is really fun, you're really digging in. So I'm excited to see what will come next. I have a few questions about, like, what mediums you plan to use to show this video, so social media, website, our city website, you know, how are we going to get this out?
So there is, there is a few ways. This will be shared. One, it will be running on our TV station, Oli TV3, through social media. And then I am working with some community partners to see how it could be distributed, maybe through some movie theaters and some other, other ways. So now that we have it done, and we've debuted it to the world, we can, we can start finding places for it to be outside of our, our social media. So reaching out to the school district and other places to see how it could be shared further.
That's really neat. Thank you. So thank you both again. So appreciate you, and look forward to what will come next. You're setting the bar pretty high for yourselves, so you're going to have to figure out a way to out, how you outdo yourselves. But in all seriousness, job well done, fantastic, and, and thank you for serving on our Youth Council. Of course. So we have the proclamation here, so we're going to go ahead and ask everyone here who is here in observance of today to come forward and take a photo with the proclamation. Thank you very much. And I also just want to give one quick shout-out and another thank you to Susan Grisham, who's been working with our Youth Council all along the way. So thank you, Susan. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is Public Comment. It looks like we have a few people signed up to speak this evening, a few here in chambers, and one person online. It looks like no one has spoken in the last 30 days, so just a few housekeeping rules. There's a clock to my right, to your left, here on the wall, that will indicate that you have two minutes of time for your comments. If you do not finish your comments in the two minutes allotted, you can email them to the City Council. Please know that we are in the middle of an election season, so please refrain from expressing your support or opposition to a candidate or ballot measure at the federal, state, or local levels. So with that, I'd like to call forward Courtney Holt House.
I am Courtney Marie Holt House. I've stood here before and given you the truth. The truth that the Washington State Department of Corrections gives housing vouchers to repeat violent offenders, including serial child rapists. And when I exposed it, I was retaliated against. Here in Olympia, just weeks ago, I placed my crime report directly into the Assistant City Manager's hands. Not hinted at, handed over. I followed up an email. I did exactly what citizens are told to do when they seek justice, and I got nothing. Silence isn't just a clerical error, it is a decision. It's the moment when you weigh harm against humanity and decide harm is much easier. And Olympia Police Department, they never showed up to protect me. They made their presence felt in ways meant to intimidate me. Blocked private number phone calls late at night to a single woman. Don't worry, I have receipts. This is the standard playbook. Punish whistleblowers, protect the predators. Rewrite the story to make the survivors unstable or dramatic, because it's easier than owning what they've done. I am here for the people who will be hurt next if I stop fighting back, and I am not stopping, even if I have to keep fighting alone. I'm planning to put people in prison. I will fight until the truth is undeniable, my tormentors are exposed, and them and those who shielded them are behind bars for making my daily life utter torture. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a couple names here on my list, but they're in the same block. So I'm not sure if it's two different people who are requesting to speak. That is Richard Dirk Burgess and Saxon Jade. Are they two different people that signed the same? Is there a Saxon Jade, or is that all the same person? Okay, Mr. Burgess, please approach the podium. Thank you.
Oh, there we go. Thanks. Looks like my third or fourth time in the past couple months, with July 22nd and March 4th. And yeah, the limp, that's from a car accident many, many years ago. It's not on my disability. I've got severe degenerative joint disease. It's not on anything. Got mild schizophrenia. I'm at 1309 Fern Street, Southwest Olympia, Washington. Fern Ridge Place Apartments, Apartment P201. Having serious air quality issues, serious, serious. Like I said, I've been here a couple times. It's April 21st, April 1st, 2024. Massive, massive, massive diesel fuel. I was hit with glue last night. Somebody deliberately, deliberately poisoned, living bleep out of me, like I said before. I'm at SaxonJade333@gmail.com. I'm at 1-360-485-3632. I'm at Chantilly Secondary School Alumni, Richard Burgess, Facebook. Chantilly Secondary School Alumni. I write some really great stuff. Serious air quality issues. I have people back east, they were doing stuff, they're above the law, they were doing stuff with my chemical weapon stuff, they want me gone. Unfortunately, people in this city don't want me around either. That's what I feel. I'm an honest person, I have no criminal record. People at my apartment, the concuss, don't want me around. I want to get to somewhere safer. I'm on the housing voucher program. They've tried to do me wrong too. They want to get me off all that stuff. As I said, I'm good people. Hopefully, I can get to like Patterson Street or whatever. All I'm asking for is normal air and to be left alone. People like to medicate me. I'm a good person. I've been here, I've been a couple times the last few months, telling you, I need the air to clear up. And I soaked in thick, heavy glue for 27 hours last night. I've been poisoning me for like 17 months, and it needs to stop. That's Fern Ridge Place Apartments. So anyway, hopefully, I can get some help. Oh, yeah, disability lawyers too.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Definitely contact me.
Thank you.
And yes, women's rights, for sure. Without women, where would we be?
Thank you very much. Okay, and for our last in-person public commenter this evening, we have Mary Beth Bernie.
I'm Mary Beth Bernie. I'm the current President of the Washington State Massage Therapy Association, and I'm also a longtime resident of Olympia. I've had a massage therapy business here in Olympia for 40 years now. On behalf of WSMTA, I would like to thank the Olympia City Council and the mayor for putting Agenda Item Number 6C on the agenda for tonight, Approval of an Ordinance, Amending the Olympia Municipal Code Regarding Massage and Reflexology Businesses. The Washington State Massage Association appreciates any effort to reduce or eliminate illicit and illegal organizations that pose as massage and reflexology business, as it helps to not only help public safety, but it also helps the safety of legitimate licensed massage therapists and reflexologists as well. These illicit businesses that are posing as massage therapy and reflexology businesses, we have them across the city here, they're all up and down the I-5 corridor, they're across the country. They have co-opted the massage profession to commit their crimes. WSMTA would also like to thank the City Attorney's Office and the Police Department for hearing us and for allowing us to participate to help refine many aspects of the proposed municipal code that you have in front of you. Our organization's goal is to develop, for lack of a better term, best practices for cities. We're trying to find out what's going to work best for law enforcement, prosecutors, city attorneys across the state of Washington, as well as work best for the actual legitimate licensed massage therapists. Our association is in support of this municipal code change. It will give law enforcement and prosecutors better tools to deal with the issue without punishing licensed massage therapists. So we hope that you will continue along the path and pass this ordinance.
Thank you very much, Mary Beth. For those of you who haven't been to Public Comment recently or in the past, there may be a response from Councils, so please stick around until the end of Public Comment. Okay, so that concludes our in-person Public Comment, and we're going to move to our virtual public commenter for tonight, and that is Christian Johnson. All right, thank you.
Good evening. I am here also in favor of the proposed changes to the massage and reflexology business. My name is Christian Johnson. I am a business owner and a resident here in Olympia. As I stated in my certified mail and follow-up email to City Council, I have a massage parlor kitty corner to my residence and one right next door to my business, and I shared with you my personal experiences investigating these places. I hope that you will approve the proposed changes to the ordinance pertaining to the massage and reflexology business. I would like to thank Councilman Vanderpool and City Manager, Mr. Bernie, for responding to my email in a timely manner. And I would also like to thank the Washington State Massage Therapy Association, and especially Mary Beth Bernie for the work in crafting these proposed drafts. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes Public Comment for tonight. Are there any comments from Council? Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Madron.
I just want to appreciate, I appreciate the Massage Therapists Association and Ms. Bernie and Mr. Johnson reaching out, that it's, I just think it's, it's helpful to have practitioners reach out and help us to better shape policy, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I was going to make similar comments, where the policies that we create are always stronger with the stakeholder engagement. And I just appreciate you being engaged and helping us go along with the best practices that you are familiar with much more than we are, because we do not run massage businesses. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Madron. Any additional comments? Well, first of all, thank you, Mary Beth, for, for being here tonight to share your comments, but also thank you for working with our Police Department and with our team here at the city to bring this ordinance forward with the best possible insight from you and your organization. So thank you very much. I do want to say thank you to, in advance, just, you know, to our Police Department for bringing this issue to our attention, for doing the work to engage with our stakeholders so that we have the best possible policy. And thank you in advance for any kind of response that you're going to have to do to address the issue. So it's just much appreciated. It's a team effort, and I know that this is something that, we, we don't know what we don't know. And so it, it's good to be here tonight in a place where we're doing something about something we don't always see. And so I just appreciate everyone's effort to get us to this point, so. And stay tuned later, it is our final business item for tonight on the agenda for presentation and consideration of passage. All right, are there any additional comments? All right, so that concludes Public Comment. We'll move on to adoption of the Consent Calendar. Is there any requests for polls or for comment on anything on the Consent Calendar? All right, seeing none, I need a motion. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting the Consent Calendar is published, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent Calendar is adopted. So So that takes us to our first business item tonight. It's 6A on your agenda, and it is the approval of the Cultural Access Advisory Board's recommendation to adjust the Inspire Olympia Grant Funding Strategy. And we have Mary Grace Godu, who is the Cultural Access Program Manager presenting tonight. Hi, Mary Grace.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and members of city council. For the record, I'm Mary Grace Godu. I'm your Cultural Access Program Manager. And Carrie is getting my slides ready. Thanks, Carrie. The Cultural Access Advisory Board takes time each July for continuous improvement discussion to look at what's working well with the program and what needs adjustment in advance of the coming funding cycle. Because the program has both annual and biennial granting cycles, the time to discuss any significant changes falls in odd-numbered years as we're getting ready for the next two-year cycle. The advisory board began this discussion at their January meeting, and then they continued at their July 10th retreat. The recommendations I'm going to share with you this evening come out of those forward planning discussions. They were reviewed and approved by the CLIPS Community Livability and Public Safety Committee on July 23rd and have now been forwarded for your consideration. The changes you're hearing about tonight will be effective for grants to organizations in one and two-year granting cycles beginning July 2026 and continuing through 2028. So with that. As a funded advisory body, the Cultural Access Advisory Board makes recommendations to council on how to distribute cultural access taxes revenue for optimal impact in support of Inspire Olympia's mission shown on this slide. The tax collects about $3 million a year, and 80% or more of that funding is competitively awarded to local nonprofit organizations who are mission-focused in arts, culture, heritage, and sciences, and who provide public programming. And it helps those organizations to expand their services and lower barriers to participation with a special focus on youth and marginalized populations. The advisory board might recommend changes to Inspire Olympia's funding process or structure in response to changes in the community, changes in city council priorities, or changes in the economy and the revenue stream that comes in through cultural tax, cultural access tax, just for examples. At this point, with only one complete year of granting under our belt, there really isn't much track record to work with, and we aren't seeing significant shifts in the community to respond to. But after two full application cycles, we have developed a better understanding of the size and the capacity of Olympia's creative nonprofit community, and it's pretty awesome. The current granting structure, which I'll talk about in just a moment, is working well so far, and the board is not recommending any notable changes to the funding goals or the granting structure that council approved in August of 2023. However, the program is carrying a balance of about $3.5 million into fiscal year 2026, and that results from two things. First of all, the tax collection began 18 months before our first granting cycle. And second, we underspent in our first year, particularly for the cultural access programs for schools, where we overestimated what we would spend for bus transportation in our startup year. So based on the outcome of multi-year budget planning, the Cultural Access Advisory Board is recommending a gradual spend-down of the funding reserve and increased grant amounts. So the advisory board began with the question, how much funding might be available for grants each year in a gradual spend-down scenario? And we modeled a four-year budget plan that took us '26, '27, '28, and 2029. 2029 being the final year of the program unless it is reauthorized. With, with these parameters that are shown on the slide. So the inputs in our budget scenario include targeting a final balance of between $500,000 and $600,000 by 2029. So our ending balance four years from now ought to be about $600,000. And that's equivalent to 20% of our annual contracts, which is a recommended reserve that we would carry, recommended by our city finance department. We are assuming that our carry-forward balance into 2026 is at $3.5 million. We're assuming that the cultural access tax revenues are going to stay pretty flat. So it's a conservative estimate. We will also, the budget scenario increases funding for the public school programming each year and increases funding for capacity building that's training and organizational support for our funded organizations. We're holding administrative costs at 10% of the cultural access tax, and we're allocating everything else into grants to organizations. And that should exceed 80%, easily will exceed 80% of the funding that's available each year. So with those inputs, the outcome is that Inspire Olympia could allocate up to $3 million a year for comprehensive and impact grant awards through 2029. And to stay within that budget, the advisory board will review and adjust the target amounts each year with actual spending prior to recommending grant awards to city council. So this is what that looks like in a spreadsheet. The yellow line kind of across the center there is the total spending for both granting categories, and it roughly is at $2.9 to $3.1 million a year over the course of these four years. And that will bring us to a balance, also in yellow in the bottom right, of somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 by 2029. These are big round numbers. It's not an exact science here. It's a budget. But on the income side, we're again estimating that the revenue will, will hold steady at about $3.1 million a year. And the expenses include gradual increases for public schools and capacity building. With this spending plan as a foundation, the Cultural Access Advisory Board was then able to talk about how and how much we could increase granting levels. And I just want to pause there for a second to see if you have any questions. And I can easily go back to the previous slide.
Councilmember Green has a question.
Yes. Question on this slide. So the number for the 2025 program administration of $310,000, but the breakdown on the bottom left is 375. Are those two different things?
Yes. The, under, under the green line at the bottom is the breakout for the cultural access programming in schools. It's just the schools. Yeah. So that 375 plugs in up under the blue line.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Yes, Councilmember Madron.
Question about the same number, but different question. So it's 2025 program administration, $310,000, and it's the same amount carried over year by year. Are we considering any inflation, cost of living adjustments?
Not, not in, not in this budget scenario. I have tried to run something more refined, but I wanted to keep it really simple.
Okay.
Here, and just for our planning purposes. But that administration is calculated at 10% of the annual cultural access tax income. And that's sort of the recommended hold point. We may have to go over that at some point, but right now, we're, we're squeaking by. Okay, I'll carry on. So here are the recommended changes. This is our current granting structure with the amendments. We have two funding pathways designed to level the competitive playing field and ensure an equitable spread of awarded funding between larger and smaller organizations. So the larger group is the comprehensive, and the smaller are the impact. The applicants for two-year comprehensive grants currently can request 15% of their organization's annual income over the past two years, up to $75,000 a year. And we are recommending that that move to 20% of their annual income and max out at $85,000 a year. We have 20 organizations that apply and currently have applied and receive funds in this category. And to give you an idea, the group includes a hands-on children's museum, kind of at the upper end, Puget Sound Estuarium, Bridge Music Project, and you heard from the YWCA tonight. They are also a comprehensive-funded organization. Generally, these groups are experienced, longstanding nonprofit orgs with multiple revenue sources and paid staffing. They offer programming year-round. They have cash income. And some of them have been impacted by federal funding cuts. And I just had a conversation out in the hallway with, what is her first name, from the YMCA? Ally, thank you. And, and they have, I didn't realize how impacted they have been by the trickle-down effect of federal funding cuts. She said that currently Inspire Olympia is their only reliable source of funding. So increasing the maximum award amount from 15% to 20% impacts the, has the greatest potential impact on mid-side, mid-size organizations. The ones who aren't hitting that $75,000 cap, right? They're generally between $250,000 and $450,000 in size. They don't have the stability of the largest organizations, but they do have financial commitments that, that are easily impacted by changes in the economy. So this increase will really support their stability. Lifting the maximum awards also obviously benefits those largest organizations and continues our commitment to Olympia's flagship cultural organizations. Just an added note for this category, the advisory board is recommending adding this requirement that organizations applying here do youth programming. We're kind of just asking them to all step up to that level of service. And there's only one currently who doesn't. But actually, they do. They just didn't include it in their application. So it's not a big lift to add that requirement, and we think it's good policy. The impact category is the other one. We have 56 organizations receiving funding in this granting category. It's, is a one-year grant currently up to $30,000. And this group includes a really wide variety of programs from the very, very small to the well-established. More than half of this group have program budgets in the range of, and this is kind of a guess, but $100,000 to $200,000. That includes volunteer time and in-kind donations, which is why it's a squishy kind of a, a group. But generally, that's, that's, that's the size of, of resources that they're working with. They often rely on local community support. Their cash resources are bare bones, and many have never even applied for a grant before. So increasing the ceiling for this group to $50,000 will allow for more sizable, more impactful grants where it's merited and expand the range of possible award amounts for this really diverse group. The change is expected to direct most of the increased funding toward our mid-sized organizations, where we believe it can have the greatest impact. It's important to note that the distribution of funding among applicants in both funding categories will still depend on the applicant pool and the quality of their proposals. No one's guaranteed to receive the full amount that they request. Proposals from all applicants are scored in a thorough review process, and awards will be recommended by the advisory board to council each spring after taking a fresh look each year at the funding that's available and following the spending plan that, that you saw earlier in this presentation. So I want to say thank you for listening to a rather administrative sort of discussion, for your patience, and I really look forward to sharing more with you about the people's side of this program with our annual report this fall and sharing some of the stories of personal and professional development and growth that are happening because of this really amazing and enlightened program. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mary Grace. Before we go to questions, I do just want to mention really quickly that this is, the Cultural Access Board's recommendation already went before community livability and public safety, as you said, from the top. So there may or may not be a lot of questions from those of us who are on that committee, but none from me. I just appreciate the work that's been done to help our nonprofits even more. And this seems like a great recommendation that's going to do that. So, thank you. Any additional questions or comments from Mary Grace? Councilmember Green.
Could you talk a little bit, as I'm still getting to know this program and these grants? Can you talk a little bit about the matching requirement on the smaller organizations? I know that like volunteer hours can count, but do you get any feedback from them on, is there any kind of, I guess I'll use the word burden on a small organization that's trying to get up and running for sort of proving that match? Or, or what's your, your bar for where you require sort of evidence of the match?
Yeah. It is a one-to-one match. So for a $30,000 funding request, they need to be able to show that they have $30,000 in resources to bring to the table. Those resources can be other grants, whether they've actually received them or only just applied for them. It can include in-kind donations and services and volunteer time valued at just about $40 an hour. So all of their board time can be calculated at $40 an hour. If they receive in-kind services, say from professional services from a graphic artist, they can calculate that in at that professional rate that that volunteer would charge. So it's not too hard, I would say. When organizations have come to us feeling troubled by it, usually a conversation and some, some spreadsheet work with them helps them realize how much they've, they've got. And Olympia is an amazing community in terms of volunteer support. So most of these organizations in the impact side, as I said, they don't have a lot of cash, and they may not have income, but they do have resources. And that's where that match is, is important.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Thanks. Any additional questions? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I'm totally in support of the recommendations, and I continue to be opposed to the match. I just think it's a burden on small organizations and that we should trust them in our dollars and their, and their requests and, and make the grants without requiring that additional paperwork. But outside of that, I think it's a great recommendation. I'm glad that we're able to up the funding amounts. I just had one question. Did the committee talk about the possibility of using some of those, those built-up reserve funds for capital projects?
They did. And they do want to, but it's too early. They felt that it was just a little too early. We've only got one year, one year behind us. They can use, organizations can use their Inspire funding for capital expenses. But if the question is, can we create a really big grant just for capital? You know, it's, it's a valid question that the committee wants to put more time and thought into.
I appreciate that. I think it's a good one to keep wrestling with. And as I've said from the beginning, it'd be really nice if there was a sizable capital carve-out. And maybe that's something we do build up to and only do every few years. But I'm glad they're waiting to get the experience before they, so they can make a smart recommendation.
Yeah. And, and we're open to ideas like, like that about how to, how to make it happen.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Mayor Protam has the motion.
Mary Grace, you and team have done so much work on this. Are you ready for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move to approve the Cultural Access Advisory Board's recommendation to adjust the Inspire Olympia Grant Funding Strategy and forward to the city council for consideration.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's me. That felt a little off to me.
Why?
Because we're, it might be, it might be that I'm just a little off today, but the wording feels off to me. Just give me a second here.
Okay.
I know we do second reading, but yeah, it just feels a little... Yeah, we are the city council. That's in the packet that I got.
Okay. So we'll do that again. You can actually read this section here under City Manager Recommendation, and I think that will cover it.
Okay.
Nice catch.
I'm, I'm coming back stronger. Okay. I'd like to move to approve adjustments to the Inspire Olympia Fund, Olympia Grant Funding Strategy as recommended.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Now, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And I'm sure a city attorney appreciates that. All right. So we will move on to our next item on our agenda, 6B, which is the approval of a resolution accepting the economic chapter of the Olympia 2045 Comprehensive Plan. And we have Jenica Machado, who is our Economic Development Division Director, presenting tonight. Hi, Jenica.
Hello, thank you. And good evening. As stated, Jenica Machado, Economic Development Division Director. I'm happy to be here this evening to bring you updates to the draft economic chapter of the comprehensive plan for city council review. As I'm new to this role in relation to the lengthy process in which this chapter has been in development... been in development, I'd like to recognize that this chapter was largely developed by my predecessor, Mike Reed, and then Joyce Phillips took the chapter forward after his departure. With that, I'll provide an overview of the process. The economy chapter by design builds from the Olympia Strong process. The Olympia Strong planning process was designed to help support the comprehensive plan. Olympia Strong focused on how to support a thriving economy and pathway opportunities for residents, businesses, and the wider community. Economic development staff talked to hundreds of people within the Olympia community to understand what their needs are. The slide shows primary ways information was gathered. They did this through surveys, interviews, listening sessions, and more, all aimed to meet people where they were at. Staff made a concerted effort to reach underrepresented populations as well. The robust Olympia Strong public engagement process led to the development of the goals and policies designed to address what feedback was received, including closing the equity gap, boosting affordable housing and home ownership, helping people out of poverty, being champions for youth, cultivating career pathways, supporting businesses, and fostering community vitality. In alignment with Olympia Strong, we continue a peopled-centered approach to strengthening Olympia's economy, on improving quality of life for people in our community, and as previously mentioned, with a heavy focus on facilitating pathways for residents and businesses. The draft economy chapter was first issued in October 2023 and has moved through a public hearing in October 2023. The planning commission deliberated and issued a final recommendation letter in March of 2024. The social justice and equity commission reviewed the chapter in May 2024. Then it was routed to the Squawson Island Tribal Council to provide an opportunity for council-to-council input. Finance committee previously saw the draft in December of last year, and then next it went to a council work session on February 4, 2025. The chapter then went back to finance committee for another review on June 16, 2025, and the finance committee did not request any additional revisions and made a motion to forward the chapter from finance committee to the city council. The version of the chapter before you this evening incorporates changes to reflect the recommendations of the planning commission, social justice and equity commission, finance committee, and council via the council work session. On this slide and the next few, we will highlight those recommendations and the discussion topics. The planning commission made specific recommendations like expanding the definition of the arts, clarifying that broadband is included in policy, to specifically include artificial intelligence and emerging technologies, to recommend the chapter be reviewed for continued consistency with the visitor bureau's destination plan, to promote commercial infill and a mix of land uses in areas designated as urban corridors, updating language and supporting public transit and the connection of people to jobs, especially between the downtown and Capitol campus, and adding a new policy to highlight that public right-of-ways are a form of public infrastructure that can be used for economic and social benefits, such as street fairs, parklets, or other similar uses. At the social justice and equity committee meeting, discussion focused on the significant amount of public engagement for the Olympia Strong process and the periodic update of this chapter of the comprehensive plan. Commissioners heard confirmation from staff that labor groups had been engaged in the development of the Olympia Strong plan, so that subsequently that perspective informed the chapter update. The commission appreciated the chapter's new focus on people and partnerships. Commissioners wanted to ensure that the chapter incorporated support for newly relocated immigrants, particularly in accessing workforce development opportunities and language classes. The commission did not ask for specific changes to the chapter and did state that they believe the chapter supports the need for people in our community to have economic stability and opportunities for success in ways that reflect the values and identity of Olympia. The finance committee considered the chapter at its meeting in December. It supported the recommendations of the planning commission. During its discussion, members noted that many people in our community are living paycheck to paycheck and that they do not have financial security, and asked for acknowledgement of that in the chapter. Other issues discussed included adding a statement to support funding for the implementation of Olympia Strong, acknowledging that we have a more diverse economy than we did 10 years ago, and a request to add resources and data information to the chapter. The council work session on February 4, 2025 generated additional recommendations. Staff worked to incorporate feedback provided by council members during the work session. Recommendations that came from council work session include recognizing the value of all workers regardless of career path, incorporating third spaces across the city, language to address reducing the local affordability gap, collaborating with the port of Olympia on topics that impact the port's current and future needs, ensuring flexibility in commercial infill through mixed zoning, encouraging collaboration with partners for complete blocks, supporting space flexibility in storefront sizes, and exploring living space and commercial space flexibility. Additionally, considering new staff in the economic development division director role and the CPE and ED director role, some additional revisions were included to enhance clarity in language and policy and to improve alignment with other plans. These included revisions to enhance narrative on supply chains, workforce, and industry change, expand entrepreneurship and small business support, leverage the existing downtown community renewal plan, assess utilization of public financing tools, adaptive reuse as a revitalization strategy, and to support efforts to expand year-round tourism and enhance wayfinding signs. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jenica. Any questions from council? Councilmember Green.
Hey, Jenica.
Hello.
I have, I'm going to call them three discussion items.
Okay.
But one may be an edit, so I'll look to my colleagues to tell me what the process is here. So bottom of page four, I don't, do you have it in front of you? Okay. Otherwise, I won't cite the page. There's just a sentence that is duplicated exactly. So second to last paragraph ends with a sentence that reads, "In Washington, about two-thirds of all jobs will require certificate associate degree or higher." Cool, great, but then that same sentence is repeated again in the next paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
I just would recommend we edit out the second one.
Can do.
And then a question on page five, where we start talking about city expenses growing faster than city revenues. The phrase is in there, "within a few years." I would argue it's already happening. Is that accurate? So I see a lot of head nods, so I would...
Balance budget.
Okay, balance budget. So anyway, so it's, you know, I'm not losing sleep over that one, but I feel like it's a bit of a misstatement. I don't know if that's too much of an edit to ask for at this stage where we're being asked to accept it. I'm looking at the city manager. Yep. Mayor Protam. Okay.
Mayor Protam, is your point on this one? Okay. Is that okay, Councilmember Madron? Okay. Mayor Protam, when?
Hi. Councilmember Green, you can ask for whatever you want at this time.
Is that just because it's Women's Equality Proclamation Day?
As you were.
I think Councilmember Madron might have some feedback before.
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on process here. When the public safety chapter came to a council study session, and then we said, no, it needs to go back to committee, it came back for another study session so that we could review the changes and add that feedback. And so I think it's actually premature that it's in front of us for acceptance this evening because we really, this is our first time as a full council reviewing the chapter in this form. And so when it comes to us for acceptance, it should be the minor tweaks here and there, making sure that our feedback was incorporated. So when, I had my hand raised afterwards, but I was actually going to recommend, because I have some comments too, that I don't think that this is ready for acceptance and that we kind of treat this as the study session that it should have received after coming out of committee. That's my, that was my thought on that.
Council, or excuse me, Mayor Protam, when?
Yeah. I hear that. I'm glad that we're having the discussion, so it's here before us now, and I would love to have a discussion run through and hear whatever comments or questions all council colleagues have, and then we'll, I think we'll get a sense of, is this ready or not?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I, sorry.
Yes.
Just one final comment.
Yep, back to you.
And I'm wondering if this is just, if this is a defined concept that I don't understand, or so page 14, item PE 6 dot 1, uses the phrase, "a 24-hour city." Is that a thing that we aspire to be? Is that a thing that we are? Is that a defined, what makes a 24-hour city?
Yeah, I think that this was added as a response to a comment in one of the committee meetings, and so I think, I think that there's room to further define that. I think that's fine.
I personally think that would be worth a little clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Because I just, I would never describe Olympia that way personally, but...
Yeah, I agree with that. We're definitely not a 24-hour city, so. Any additional comments? Councilmember Cooper.
Yes, actually, I was just going to agree that I think it's okay to keep moving forward. We have two more bites at the apple beyond our acceptance of the chapter, both first and second reading, where we can actually make edits and tweaks to the final document. So I think as long as nothing's a significant deviation, then we can accept as discussed this evening. That makes sense to me.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron, followed by Mayor Protam, when?
Yeah. I think, I think we could also consider having it come back on consent and being able to review the changes before we get to the very end of the year, right before the whole plan needs to be adopted on a deadline. So I, Councilmember Green, I also saw that within a few years, and I like logged that too, but it wasn't one of the things I wrote down, so I'm glad that you said it. I was like, is it Hill to die on? And now that you've said it, I'm like, you know, actually, I think we should be transparent that we're in that situation now. And also with the 24-hour city, I read that, and it just made me feel tired. And then I was like, is it just the age that I'm at? Like, you know, are other people wanting that? I don't know. But, but yeah. Some of the thoughts that I had on this chapter, first off, I think it's been improved greatly from what it became, came before us in a study session before, and thank you to the finance committee for, you know, taking a look at it again. I think there's a couple of things that are missing in here. You know, we referenced the downtown strategy as something to continue to focus on and implement, but we've also recently created the Capitol Mall Triangle Plan, and I think that that's not anything that's ever going to grow any legs if we don't have a focused economic development effort in that space. So I think that that should also be incorporated into this plan somehow. And in addition to that, we've also talked about the need for economic development efforts when it comes to neighborhood centers. This is separate from the small commercial stuff. We've done a whole big study on the designated neighborhood centers that we have and what it takes to kind of like bring those things to fruition. And, you know, I think that that's another thing that could be called out in this plan is specifically speaking to neighborhood centers in places where we would like to see them, but we haven't seen them yet. I noted, and one thing that I also noted, and I just thought of it because I always talked with Mike Reed about the future of the downtown library and libraries in general in Olympia. You know, we have a responsibility to provide the facilities for them, and we've talked, we've had conversations here and there with, you know, the director of the library and, you know, I, and I don't know, you know, I think about it in the context of this plan because I always talked with Mike Reed about it. And so I don't know if there's another place in the comprehensive plan where the library lives, but if not, I think it could live here because I think there's a lot of opportunities provided for people through the library system. And also, you know, on page, at the bottom of page two, it talks about how, who we collaborate with, a variety of sectors, government, business, education, workforce, nonprofits. And when I look through the plan, I see a lot of stuff around, you know, trying to keep government offices here. I see a lot of stuff around supporting businesses, you know, education, both in terms of education for access to opportunity, but also like trying to convince Evergreen and SPSCC to have a location downtown, see a lot around workforce development stuff. But I don't see a whole lot about nonprofits in the chapter. There's a couple of sections where nonprofits are specifically called out around complete downtown blocks, and I'm not sure what that means, but I'm not seeking clarification on this at that point. And there's also a section in the creative economy component of this that talks about organizations, and I think we can translate that to nonprofits. But I think they have a bigger role in our community as employers, as people who help other people advance themselves economically. And I don't have a specific, you know, you know, statement to give to you, but I think somewhere on here we should talk about supporting nonprofits specifically because everybody else kind of seems to have a goal that's focused on them or multiple. So that is most of what I wanted to say. And then I do have a question, you know, this has come out of the finance committee, and my question actually is for Councilmember Gilman. You had mentioned previously with another chapter that you had concerns around, tax increment financing, and I see that recommendation in here, and I'm curious if that concern is still existing for you and, you know, this is something that you voted to recommend to us. I'm just curious like where you're at, and I think we should have a dialogue a bit as a council about whether or not that is something that we want the city to explore in the future. So, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
So I continue to have reservations about tax increment financing as a tool, and I believe that we either eliminated or softened the language when we were working on the triangle plan. So, but it's also, it's not the thing that's going to either let me go to sleep tonight or not go to sleep tonight. Well, I mean, so here's what I would ask that we'd consider is several of these items that are more development of structures and infrastructure, they're reflected in other chapters, and so I'm, I'm fine having them acknowledged here. I don't, I don't know whether that will necessarily drive more work from staff or change what we take on as a city. I like each one of the suggestions you made and the edits that Kelly suggested. And then the other thing I would ask us to consider is the resolution for tonight is to preliminarily adopt, and is there weight or value in doing that now? Is it better to have it come back to us reflecting these changes? Because I was, the last chapter, we did the same thing. We had to preliminarily adopt, and I'm not sure what the, what the value is of preliminarily. Maybe it's just to give staff a chance to breathe for a minute as they assemble the document?
Yes. Councilmember Madron, you have a response to that.
Yeah, yeah, just to provide more clarity, because I worked pretty closely with Joyce in like, you know, the process on how the council is engaged in this and making sure that we have, as the chosen representatives of the community, that we have adequate opportunity to help shape this. Because I don't think that, as the process was originally designed, that we had a good enough opportunity to do it and be able to make sure that the product we have at the end of the year is what we want. So, you know, so the process that we've been working through with each of the chapters is that, you know, I think we've had one or two that bypassed committee, and then it got a lot of feedback in a study session, so I'm like, probably should have just gone to committee. But most chapters through committee, and then once it's out of committee, a study session. And then it comes, and then, and then it comes to us for acceptance, which is, was all of our feedback incorporated? But it's still not the final thing. We're just saying, okay, this is, you know, we've had, we've given our feedback, it's been incorporated. And I know staff plan to bring the whole thing to us before it's due at the end of the year to say, okay, here's the whole thing. And that is our last bite at the apple, but we do not want to really come in with major changes at that point because it's almost done, right? And, and I think that, you know, us having the ample process upfront to make sure that when we get towards that last step of approving the plan, you know, that we're, you know, 98% of the way there. And also, the public get to see us deliberate on this. They get to a chance to hear what we're saying, how we're shaping this, and have more opportunity to engage with it as well. So, so, yeah. So, you know, we've had one other chapter that, where we, in a study session, said, okay, it's not quite there, send it back to committee. That came back to another study session so we could look at it again. And this, this chapter didn't do the second study session after being reshaped by, coming through the finance committee. So that's, does that provide you with the clarity you were hoping for?
So just prelim, I haven't had other experience in these... So just prelimi, I haven't had other experience in these years on council of preliminary, having a resolution to preliminarily adopt. That's all. I was just a little hung up on that. So I don't mind if we're saying we're generally okay with the chapter, but we'll look at it again when it's consolidated into a single document.
Thank you. City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of listened to the conversation. What I might suggest here is, as we get to the rest of your comments, some of these are fairly simple changes, some might need just a little bit more thought, particularly the Capitol Mall Triangle and some of those, how we get the language in there. So I might recommend is, is to go back and let staff make some updates and then bring this back on, at least on consent, so you have another chance to look at it. We can outline the changes in the staff report. Instead of having Jenica come back for another presentation, maybe we can do it that way. I'm seeing head nods.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Nice to see you. I thought that was so gracious and wonderful for you to just acknowledge all of the work that went into this chapter. Really appreciate that. And then you, you probably know this, but you went through a timeline of when things went to certain, certain places. And, and at some points, there was a little drama. And you, you just outlined that so well and nicely, so thank you for that. Okay, I have a number of, of questions and comments. And it just means it's because I care. So the first one is. Oh, sorry. I accidentally flipped it back, so. Okay, so number five, for housing instability. Yeah, so we, so love the first sentence of renters and homeowners experience economic challenges in vastly different ways. While I do agree with what's in this paragraph, I feel like we, we start off and we say that, and then we talk about the ways that renters have it worse, but not about the challenges that homeowners also have. Not to say that it isn't a privilege to already just own property, right? But I think about experiences that I'll hear from people about like, oh my goodness, I bought this home and I didn't realize I had to take care of, maintain the sidewalk in front of it, and I didn't realize that the sidewalk costs a lot of money. Or that I needed to take some trees down, keep on having these trees evaluated every five years by an arborist, and then pay to have them taken down, right? Or, oh my, oh, that I have to reditch my ditch, you know? That was interesting to me. So, so there's all of these challenges. And then one of the things, even though it sort of challenges what we, I guess, kind of traditionally think, but when it's talking about homeowners and it talks about have seen, homeowners have seen incredible growth in home value over time. Great, one could think. And also, another thought is, wow, that's a lot of taxes we got to pay every year, you know? So, so, you know, things like that. So I think about all of these things. So all of these costs that homeowners will then incur. So it's not, and, and please hear me when I say, it's not about, you know, who has it worse. It's just, I would like to see more of the challenges of homeowners fleshed out a little bit more there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Ooh, challenges to upward mobility, right under housing instability. So this one, admittedly, I'm not sure if this is a little too in the weeds or not, but the last two sentences, or the last three sentences, and I'm just going to read it because there's also people listening in that are, don't have this in front of them probably. But it says, "Some people are happy in their work or may not want to pursue a different type of work, even if their current work pays a minimum or low wage." And then it talks about how all people should still be able to live, live in our community and have housing and economic security. I don't want to quibble over the word happy. I think that's like one of the hardest things for humans to find. I suggest us putting content in there, but maybe that's just me. Maybe I'm still looking for happiness. But there's something that I'm like, why does it say that? But also another thing is that some people are in the top of their field, you know? And there is, or, or there's just, you know, there, whatever the next highest position, there's either no higher position, or at least higher paying position. People do wonderful things, amazingly talented things all the time, and it doesn't make sense when it comes to the payroll, right? Right? Paraeducators, I'm talking about y'all, right? And so I just want to, yeah, I don't, I don't know. It needs a little finessing, I think. But it's just something that, I might not have the solution, but it's something that drew my eye. Okay, so next page would be industry change, supply chain, and labor challenges. Love the focus on making a more localized supply chain when we're talking about city spend. I also think it's really important to talk about, even literally adding a word, supplier diversity is really important, right? And so you could have a localized supply chain, like that is our, our go-to office supply store locally, okay? And also, I mean, I'm telling an expert here, but, but if something happens to that, you know, they decide to retire or whatever, you haven't diversified your supply chain, and now you're in a pickle. So whether you were a local or a national, you're still in a pickle. But, you know, localizing is great because it keeps the money in the community longer. But if we could add diversity, that would be great. Okay, so, oh, for the next page over, number seven, for advanced climate solutions. This is just like a wordsmith thing, but it says, "Climate change will affect our national and local economy in several ways." Da-da-da-da-da. I would just say, you know, maybe local and broader economy? I'm always trying to use language that's going to keep things open, especially when we're talking about years ahead. Oh, and another thing on the next page, number eight. So this is right under the photograph of the inner-city transit bus. This one's interesting to me, probably because I still consider myself a young person. It says, "Additionally, Olympia's climate adaptation values are likely to make us more successful at attracting and retaining younger workers," period. Then it says, "By working with partners, the city can influence the accessibility of such job training programs for Olympia residents." I, I think that, I think that assumes that every young person is going to follow their, like live where they, their climate values, like align their environmental values. And I think they're going to live where they can get a job and they can afford stuff. So perhaps some flushing out there when, yeah, so, and then also, now that I'm actually like looking at it a little, I guess, saying it out loud, but the second sentence, talking about job training programs, I guess, maybe it's just how it's said, but it, it almost sounded to me like, oh, we need to skill up these young people. But it's like, well, actually, young people are very talented. They're thinking about things that, you know, we didn't, every generation should get better. That's how it goes, right? So, yeah, maybe just like making that very specific to, to like climate, like jobs in climate, maybe. But, yeah, I think, do you get what I mean?
Yeah.
It seems like kind of a rub. Yeah. Okay. I'm almost done. Oh, okay. I noticed that the, I almost honestly hesitate to bring this up because I know that we have, have a now ballot initiative ahead of us. And so I don't want there to be sort of linkage to that when I talk about a living wage. But I noticed that within the chapter, we talk about wage in a lot of different ways. We talk about it being a living wage. We talk about it being a thriving wage, a family wage, a high-paying wage, and probably another type of wage. And I'm with it. You know, I want people to make money. I don't want anyone taking any less wage for me, like, I get it. And also, I love that the chapter's talking about, I don't think we ever really explicitly say it, but we talk about affordability as a whole, right? People wouldn't need to bake higher wages if things were just more affordable, right? But I also, you know, I'm not tone deaf enough to think that, oh, we don't have to worry about wage, we just need to make things affordable, right? It's both. But I just, I would love for us to wrap around maybe one way of saying it in a way that's really clear to folks. I think you'd say, you know, survey some people and say, like, what's a family wage? And I don't think a lot, like, people would be a little bit like, what are you talking about? You know? So, yeah, so if we could just talk about that a little bit more. Also, I hope this is not the case, just like how I'm trying not to think about the ballot measure or talk about it, is that I noticed two areas where on the edited copy with the track changes, this is my last comment, but on the, the edited, the edited version on pages one and two, on the bottom of page one, lovely what Olympia values. And then there's like a little fragment in there that, at the end, that says, "We value living wages for all." And it just seems kind of weird. I think, sure, wage is part of the economy, you know, part of the economy, but it just seems like it was just, like, someone's were feeling really passionate, stuck it in them real quick, and it seems weird to me. And I feel like we can remove that and still have other parts in here that talk about wage. I also, I feel less that way about the top of number two, or sorry, page two, where it says, "Our vision for the future." And it says, "Every Olympian is afforded a living wage." And then it starts talking about like lifelong opportunities. I would love for that, where it, where it says that, for us to have that opportunity to explicitly say, like, overall affordability and, and whatever the most plain language way is, because wage is a part of it, but it's a part of it. So those are my comments. Do you have any questions about any of that?
No, I will replay this later and make sure I get all of the comments.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanderpool, followed by Councilmember Madron, and followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Yes, so I did feel very positive about this, but now I've heard so many comments about different things in here. And so I may, I may be emailing you some, some additional thoughts. So the 20, like 24-hour city, this is a conversation that I, I swear I had a conversation with Mike Reed about this last year. And I can, I can't think of off the top of my head examples that could help fill out what that means, because in back of my mind, I know what it means. But I realize now that if you don't know what that means, there's no examples, you don't have an understanding of it. And so I will be probably sending an email with some light notes on some of that. So, yeah, and I, I like a lot of the, the recommendations coming forward, but I'm going to, I'm seriously going to have to take another look at it now that I'm hearing a lot from my councilmates.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Hearing a lot of dialogue on this, so I don't think that we're ready for acceptance tonight. I would like to see it come forward with revisions that reflect the conversation personally. And when, there was something that Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen said that I didn't even think of until she said it, and, which is why it's great that we have this opportunity for dialogue here. And it's, it's the living wages for all assumes that all are earning wages. And I think it leaves out people who are on fixed incomes or, you know, those who have retired and they're, you know, they're, it, it, not, not everybody has their source of livelihood from a wage. And so I think that, that statement, I, I appreciate what you said, just talking about how like, you know, people can afford to be here, you know, no, no matter where they're at, right? And so that's just something that I kind of clued in on as you were speaking.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
Good, I, I appreciate all of this dialogue, and I agree with Councilmember Madron that we're probably not ready to, to approve this in another 10 minutes. I think we'll, we'll wait to get the, the next iteration back. And I, I just wanted to acknowledge, Mayor Pro Tem, you, you talked quite a bit about this upward mobility chapter, and that's the one that I was most challenged by both last year in our work session and in the finance review. And I very much appreciate the, the edits that Jenica and her team have made to address it. But the particular sentence, I was going to just say, hey, it's better, but the particular sentence you called out about people being happiness and wanting to pursue, it's still insisting that there's this hope for a career rather than a job, that there's a hope for upward mobility. And it's, it's really important to me that we acknowledge that it's okay if somebody is a good landscaper, childcare provider, paraeducators, you were saying, and that they stay for 40 years doing that? That's, that's, it's, it's valid, and I'm, I'm concerned that this, that this is filtered through, there's a lot of aspiring, successful, well-educated people in our policymaking world. And sometimes I think we lose sight that there's also a large, a large portion of our community who have jobs. They're not building a career, they're not seeking mobility, but they're hoping to find some measure of economic security and some measure of satisfaction with life, like either, you know, just doing the job so they can live. So anyhow, I just, I just, that's, that's what I was trying to get at. And this, this gets there, but it feels like it's a little bit like trying to get, to use a data reference, trying to get Fonzie to say, I'm sorry. It was like, but, but they gotta want some upward mobility, they gotta, you know? So anyhow, thank you for the edits you've made. And if that, that little phrase about some people are happy in their work and may not want to pursue other work, even if they have a crappy job, it's, I, I don't think it's a helpful sentence. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman. Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Green.
Okay, so since this is turning into a discussion, Councilmember Gilman, I'm talking to you. I just want to, I can't find it right now. But when I read this, something that you said, I'm pretty sure impacted this portion of the chapter where it talks, it's talking about education, but it's talking about like different forms of education, whatever that looks like to folks. And it's not, it's not, which is different than before where we just talk about like, you go to college, you like do the things. And you had equated that to, to just respecting, basically respecting people's choices of like, if, like, what do they want to do after high school? You know, or getting their GED? And it doesn't always look like a college track, right? It could look like a certificate or other things. And so that, that has landed here, and I so appreciate that. And I, I think about that a lot, actually. So, thank you. Yeah, anyways, that reminded me of, that's basically kind of what you're saying now, like, respect people as they are. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Gilman's and the Mayor Pro Tem's comments. One thing that has come to mind for me as we've discussed this and other chapters of this though as well, is I feel like we need to be conscientious at this point in the process, that these don't go back through any community conversation. And so as we think about changes that could be interpreted as philosophical statements about our city values or things like that, I get a little nervous about that, just in the fact of nobody else is going to weigh in on those but the seven of us up here. And so, and I just say that broadly to say, if we start thinking about things that, that could be interpreted as political, philosophical, whatever it is, I just think we need to be really careful with that, recognizing that at that point, we are absolutely just inserting council philosophy into the plan.
Fair enough. Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen.
Not a rebuttal, but just a response is, Councilmember Green, I appreciate that. And also, because I'm like, whoa, what does that mean? Like, I'm a community member too, I'm weighing in, right? I'm thinking about what you're saying as it's coming out. And so that is a, for me, I think that serves as a good reminder for if we were to go back and change anything, any of the, like, the planning commission or the social justice and equity commissions, right? But, but part of it is, and I know you know this, but a part of this is that if we see something, like, our privilege is to be on council, we're going to, if we see something, like, it needs to be changed. And so to be able to, to mold it and make it more, more responsive to what we're going out and, and hearing from the community too, so. But I think, is that hitting the right balance for you?
It's hitting the right balance for me, but again, having it, having the conversations happen so late in this process is what just worries me a little, in that nobody is going to have the opportunity to weigh in on it, or they may at like public comment, things like that. So that's all, it's just like, I wish that kind of conversation happened, you know? that, so that's all, it's just like, I wish that kind of conversation happened, you know, in, in some portion of this where there was small group discussions, or just the ability to other, for other people to, uh, speak to that, 'cause I think it is, I mean, it's super valid, and absolutely, there's, there's, uh, uh, privilege written into a lot of this, so I don't discredit that, I just want us to, to be thoughtful about that of, uh, you know, at this point, it's just us as representatives and, uh...
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman.
So I, I appreciate that, um, but I also, th- this was a conversation when Mike first brought this to us, and it was a conversation in our finance review, so I, I don't feel like it's adding something new, but, but trying to continue to tweak this question about, um, serving everybody in the community, so I, so I, in, in my sense, it's not either adding new philosophy, or, um, it's, it's, um, I guess it'd be my third bite at the apple, the third session of trying to explain my concern about emphasizing, um, the few winners, the, the, you know, that, that's all, so...
Yes, Councilmember Madrone.
I'm loving all the dialogue we're having on this, um, I mean, don't roll your eyes at me, it's true. I, how often do we actually have a lot of back and forths among us on council? I think this is really, really valuable. Um, and one, and one, another thing that I heard, and I don't even remember who was talking, was that, um, um, and maybe that's a way to, um, tie this in somehow, is that we have really, really critical jobs in our community that do not pay high wages, and people need to do those jobs. Uh, child, you know, we mentioned childcare providers, paraeducators, that, like, we need people to do that work. Um, and, you know, as, as Councilmember Gilman was saying, there might be somebody who's in that role for, you know, their whole lives, and they are, you know, they're content there, they're providing a, a critical service to the community, um, maybe, maybe it's not like, you know, they're, yes, this is my life purpose, uh, it may be like, this is what I do so I can go play guitar later, um, but other, maybe it is their life purpose. So I think if there's a way that we can tie in that there is very critical work that does not pay well in our community, and, uh, and, and, and people need to be, uh, secure in those jobs, whether, you know, whether it's what they want to do their whole life or it's a step in a career.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpool.
The word I keep thinking about is dignity. All, all labor has dignity, the ability for someone to work their job regardless of what it is in the city limits, to, 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 to live without the, the fear of, uh, unaffordability, um, the fear of, of losing, so, we were talking about it a little earlier, about how there were some people that were, uh, that, uh, they're not, and their income isn't, is sometimes a social safety net from the federal government that's now almost gone, or will be gone shortly. And so I think the, I think that regardless of their livelihood, there should be dignity in that, and being able to afford to live in the city, and I think, I, the word dignity is the word I'm thinking of. I don't know how we can implement that, but that's the word I keep thinking of.
Point well taken, any additional comments? All right, I think we've had quite a bit of discussion. Um, just really quickly, though, I wanna just share a few thoughts. Um, one being that, um, you know, this conversation around upward mobility, um, I think of the word stability when we're talking about others, right? Um, so maybe that's something that we can kind of mull over and, and talk about the, those who are content in the roles that they're in, and, and, um, how do we support them in being stable in the community? Um, Councilmember Green, your point, um, I think is well taken. I think what I hear you saying is to respect the spirit of the work that has already been put in, uh, by our community members, and don't make too many changes to that. Um, I think that's a good reminder, because, you know, we can just sort of start making a bunch of changes and, and, um, not give that all the thought that it deserves, so thank you, uh, for that, that's an important one. Um, but I will say, a lot of the changes that I think I heard tonight are ones that, um, are either in addition to or don't necessarily entirely eradicate the spirit of, of the chapter, so I think we're okay there. Um, couple things, um, on, uh, the lack of mention of nonprofits, I agree with that, uh, Councilmember Madrone. Specifically, um, I have some thoughts around, including the libraries, specifically because education and workforce is the first pathway that's mentioned, um, and obviously libraries, it makes sense that we would talk more about public libraries and, and access to them, um, specifically even in that place, as well as wherever we may mention nonprofits, um, and frankly, also, uh, museums. Um, so we currently have a proof of concept of a history museum by one of our nonprofits in the community, and, um, I think that that's a, a double whammy there in terms of education and nonprofits, and we should be talking about, um, how we want to be supportive of those efforts. I tend to think that the city certainly has a stake in a history museum, but that's a separate conversation, um, but I do think that we, we should be supporting those efforts, whether it's through direct city support or through a nonprofit doing that work, and how we can support them in that work. So, um, there should be some, some mention of, of that vision. Um, and, um, there's a few other things in here that, honestly, this chapter, um, on a positive note, it makes me think about, like, what would this chapter look like had COVID not happened? This is the, the first chapter that sort of really like made me think about that, because, um, there's a lot of differences or changes, if you will, in this version versus the previous one. Um, things like adaptive reuse of commercial spaces, like, we're having those conversations now with people working from home, um, you know, and, and also, uh, community, uh, connector spaces or those third places for people to socialize, and, um, specifically because people are doing more remote work, how do we, um, you know, create those social connections? So, this chapter just made me think a lot about how we are certainly adapting and thinking of a future vision for the community that's relevant and appropriate, so I appreciate, uh, the work that's been done so far on your part, uh, to articulate that, as well as community members, and, uh, our former economic development director, Mike Reed, who I know did a lot of work here as well before he left. Um, so, I'll just leave it at that, I have some other thoughts, but we've been going at it for a while, but, um, thank you, um, for your work. I do believe we have, uh, so do we need to make a motion to not, uh, accept?
You do not.
Or is it?
Okay. So we'll, we'll take in all the feedback, I mean, Jenica will take in all the feedback, and then at a staff level, we'll look at the, the, some additional changes, and this will come back to you for your approval at a later date.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thank you very much. All right, so that's gonna take us to our final business item for tonight, and that is succeed on your agenda, and is the approval of an ordinance amending the Olympia Municipal Code Regarding Massage and Reflexology Businesses. And presenting tonight, we have Shelby Parker, our interim police chief, and Al Weineg, who is our detective sergeant, who is here joining her. Um, so, good to see you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council. For the record, again, I'm Shelby Parker, interim police chief, and with me tonight is Detective Sergeant Al Weineg. He has played a significant role in the work that I'll be sharing, particularly through building relationships with vital community partners. This evening, I am presenting a proposal to update the City of Olympia Municipal's Code. If adopted, the ordinance and its amendments will strengthen our ability to promote public safety, enhance community well-being, support accountability, and ensure our local laws reflect shared values and the evolving needs of our city, specifically regarding massage and reflexology businesses. I'd like to extend my sincere appreciation to the city's legal team and the Washington State Massage Therapy Association for their dedication and collaboration in helping Olympia advance a model ordinance. We hope this ordinance will set the standard not only for the South Sound, but also for Washington State. The Washington State Massage Therapy Association has a representative here tonight. Thank you, Mary Beth, I really appreciate your, your collaboration. Community members have raised repeated concerns about suspected illicit massage and reflexology businesses advertising and presenting as legitimate massage and reflexology providers. However, some of these businesses officers, offer services outside of the scope of legitimate massage therapy, including packed practitioners appearing in lingerie and online reviews suggesting sexually explicit services. These concern, concerns include serious allegations of human trafficking. The Olympia Police Department works closely with Innovations Human Trafficking Collective, a locally-based nonprofit with a national reach. Innovations provides critical resources and housing for survivors of human trafficking and offers training and technical assistance to first responders and service providers. Innovations has representatives here tonight, I'd like to acknowledge Chelsea and Sam sitting over in the corner. I'd like to express my appreciation to Innovations for their support and continued collaboration. Thank you. Due to limitations in our current code, OPD has historically relied on joint investigations with the Department of Health. While the Department of Health has imposed civil penalties, these measures have proven insufficient in deterring ongoing illicit activity. This is largely because the Department of Health is set up to regulate licensed massage therapists, not unlicensed persons posing as massage therapists. This makes it difficult for the Department of Health to proceed without municipal participation to shut down illicit businesses posing as massage therapy or reflexology businesses. The owners, operators, and managers of these illicit massage and reflexology businesses are suspected of engaging in human trafficking, promoting prostitution, committing fraud and money laundering, and undermining legitimate massage and reflexology businesses posing direct risks to public health and safety. To address these concerns, we're proposing a set of changes to the city's code that work together to close the regulatory gaps we currently face. These include: modernizing our lewd conduct ordinances to align with state law, creating a dedicated chapter that establishes expectations and oversight for massage and reflexology businesses, providing the city authority to deny or revoke business licenses based on criminal activity, and updating our zoning definitions to better reflect the regulated nature of massage therapy. Together, these changes form a coherent, enforceable framework that prioritizes public safety, supports legitimate practitioners, and disrupts the business model of those engaged in illicit or criminal activity. The proposed ordinances makes important updates across several sections of the city code to better protect the public, support legitimate businesses, and align with state standards. First, the new ordinance clearly defines who is responsible for operating massage and reflexology businesses, including owners, directors, and managers, even in cases where that information isn't fully disclosed. It also prohibits anyone under 18 years of age from practicing massage or reflexology, and requires that all practitioners be properly licensed or certified. Licenses must be clearly posted, and no one without a valid license can offer or advertise services. The ordinance gives the city the authority to inspect public areas of these businesses during business hours and sets hygiene, sanitation, and record-keeping standards that align with state rules. It also clarifies the scope of physical contact that's allowed under a massage license, helping ensure practitioners stay within their legal boundaries. When it comes to enforcement, the ordinance establishes escalating consequences for violations, starting with misdemeanors, and moving to gross misdemeanors for repeat offenses. The city will also have the authority to deny or revoke business licenses if there's a qualifying conviction, such as prostitution, fraud, or related criminal activity. In those cases, there's a mandatory two-year waiting period before someone can reapply. For business license applicants who don't hold a valid massage or reflexology license, the city will require their date of birth and home address. These applicants will undergo a background check by the Olympia Police Department, focused on convictions related to sexual offenses, narcotics, and crimes tied to the operation of massage and reflexology businesses. Anyone denied a license will have the right to appeal. Finally, we're updating the code to formally remove massage therapy from the personal services category. This reflects the fact that massage therapy is a licensed healthcare profession in Washington State, and it deserves to be treated as such in our local code. Enforcement will be addressed by our community policing unit, including our neighborhood police officers and downtown walking patrol officers. As complaints are received, OPD will investigate suspicious activity using a victim-centered, trauma-informed approach. If cases become complex, additional investigative resources will be deployed as needed. The negative impacts of this illicit activity are far-reaching. They exploit vulnerable individuals who may be trafficked, they damage the reputation and viability of legitimate massage and reflexology practitioners, and they violate the trust of community members seeking safe and professional massage and reflexology services. Our ongoing pro- excuse me, our ongoing partnership with Innovations Human Trafficking Collective is central to ensuring that victims are treated with care and dignity, and supported on a path to becoming survivors. Safeguarding these individuals remains at the heart of this initiative. We thank, again, Human, Innovations Human Trafficking Collective for their partnership. In our timeline, tonight is the first reading of our ordinance on September 9th, we'll move to the second reading, and we hope to have the ordinances and amendments in effect October 1st of 2025. I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any comments from council? Questions? Mayor Pro Tem Wen.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. Thank you so much, it's just a comment of gratitude. Um, uh, serving on the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee, and being a member of the Olympia community, uh, many people have asked for this, including, uh, council members and committee mates, um, and, uh, you know, some, sometimes you, you know, you feel so passionately about something, many times, you feel so passionately about something, you want it to happen, you want it to happen yesterday, um, and there's a lot of complexities around it, and, um, you and the team you've worked with have done such a wonderful job of being responsive to the, to the asks of, um, our community and this council, and, uh, you've worked, uh, with partners, um, that know what they're doing, um, to, to make something, uh, that, you know, is hopefully gonna work for our intended, um, our intended use and, um, not having unintended consequences on, uh, what is, uh, a very distinguished, important profession, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, any additional questions? One moment, one moment. Um, I do, I do just have a question, um, and forgive me, 'cause I didn't use, I wasn't thinking about this when I read the ordinance, but I'm thinking about it now. There is nothing in here that would interfere with like, um, say, a massage therapy student, right? Because there's a lot of language about, if you're not licensed, you can't, so I just, I just wanna make sure that there's nothing that would interfere with a student's ability to, uh, be trained and, and learn on the job. Okay, I'm seeing some head shaking no in the back.
I'm confident the answer is no, based on the amazing collaboration we have with the Washington State Association of Massage Therapists.
Okay, great, and then, um, also, I was just thinking about facilities that don't, where massage therapy isn't necessarily primarily what they do, so, for example, like a chiropractor's office, they have massage, they offer massages in there, so, would, uh, would this trigger this for them as well?
So if a chiropractic office had massage therapists on staff, yes, this would apply to them, they need to have their licenses posted. Um, otherwise, the medical professionals should be operating within the scope of their specific license, which would be, in your example, chiropractic care.
Yep, okay, thank you. So all the questions I had?
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? All right, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Payne, Mayor Payne, and thank you, Chief and the team, for putting this together. I move to approve on first reading and forward to second reading the ordinance amending the Olympia Municipal Code Regarding Massage and Reflexology Businesses.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, that's, that's a, a great thing that we're doing, and I hope, uh, other jurisdictions across the state are, are taking a look at this as well, and that, Mary Beth, I hope you are working with them as well, so, thank you so much. All right, so, uh, that concludes- All right, so that concludes our business for tonight, so we'll move on to council reports, and I'll begin with the mayor's report. Just briefly, I, you heard it was mentioned earlier that I participated in a lunch with some youth with the YWCA. It was for their Change Your World Camp, where they were interested in having me for lunch to talk about civic engagement for youth and, and what that's like at the local level. So it was wonderful to just sit on the Capitol Campus lawn and have lunch with them and answer their questions. Really appreciated National Night Out last week, last Tuesday night on primary election night. That was a great time. I was with the police chief and with the city manager, and we hit up about five neighborhoods, and there were a few of us that split up into four different groups, where we divided and conquered going across the community. I know Mayor Protam Nguyen was there and Councilmember Gilman, and so it was a wonderful time to be out in the community. I look forward to that night every, every year. It's a night where you kind of get to engage with community members, see what's on their minds. A lot of the times, people want to just be, they just want to be heard. Other times, they're mostly, of, of the time, it's, it's mostly just, thanks for being present, and people really appreciate you showing up. And I appreciate them for all that they do to engage in their neighborhoods and welcome us every year with such a, a fanfare, that some folks have bands and all kinds of things going on in their neighborhoods. So, much appreciated. Just a couple of things I want to mention really quickly is, so just to update you all on the reparations work that's happening at the state level, I am serving on the state's Reparations Study Advisory Committee. So that is hosted by the State Department of Commerce. They're a special initiatives unit. Some of you might be familiar with Carrie Retlin, who used to be an employee here at the City of Olympia, is, is leading a lot of that work with this special initiatives unit on the advisory committee. So, right now, what we're currently doing is going through developing the RFP process for how we intend to select a consultant that will do this work to complete the study. So, right now, that's what the committee's working on, is that. In addition to that, I have asked that our municipal report from true inclusion be shared as well, so that eventually it's shared with the consultant that's hired. So even though it's on municipal strategies, that it's at least something that maybe can help do a shortcut for looking at all of the national work that's been done for whomever is selected. They can just check out our report and maybe skip a lot of, of doing that extensive work. And then, lastly, I want to mention, actually, a couple of weeks ago, I neglected to mention that Association of Washington City's large city advisory committee, so I serve on that. We had a pretty extensive discussion on addressing homelessness and, and sharing our solutions of what works in our communities and how we can continue to support each other. So it was really great to have those conversations and share quite a bit about what the City of Olympia is doing. And then I heard quite a few interesting things from the City of Yakima and also from Vancouver about efforts that they're doing to address some of their issues around homelessness, particularly with public safety issues and also with cleanup. So it was interesting to hear their different approaches. Some of the things that they do, I don't think would fly here, so I'm not even going to mention those things right now, but mostly, I, I think it was a, a really productive conversation just about things that we're doing to work with nonprofits on bringing more permanent supportive housing to the community, how we went about doing that, explaining our home fund, and how we combine that with our county. These are all things that other communities haven't even done, and, and they're just starting out with thinking about some of these ideas. So it was great to, to share some of that with them as well. So, and I will start to my left with Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two reports. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee, for some reason, I wanted to put Southwest in SWAC. Solid Waste Advisory Committee, we met last week, and some really fantastic research that they shared around, I think the last time I reported out, we talked about, they were, the Hazle House was working on a program to where nonprofits could come collect usable household chemicals, you know, low-risk chemicals, and reuse those. And, and as a follow-up to that, some of the county staff did some research around cities that have programs like that for individual use, where folks can come get supplies, and our area used to have that, had to stop it for various reasons, but I think that may be something they're looking for, towards in the future. So that was some really just great work by the county. And then, a couple of other things that they shared, there is, they're taking applications for a master composting class. So for people who want to become master composters, check out the Thurston County Solid Waste, and there's information on, on how to apply, starting in September, or, excuse me, the class starts in September. And then last thing on that is, is just a shout-out to, to the group at the county and specifically some volunteers who put on a fix-it fair back in the spring. They received national recognition from the National Association of Counties for best in category in the volunteers category. That was a volunteer-run event where folks could take in, you know, items that they didn't want to throw away that could be fixed if somebody had the, the proper tools and knowledge, and so they were really proud of that, and will be doing another one probably before the end of this year. So, something for folks to keep an eye on. And then my second report is on Joint Animal Services, which met yesterday, and just a couple of things for council to be aware of. Nothing that we need to do right now, but there will be conversations closer to budget. They have been steadily full since January, which typically, in that world, there's a dip kind of in, early in the year, and then a spike in the summer. They have just seen steady, particularly kitten intake, as adorable as it sounds, is up 63% for the year, and puppy intake is up 66% for the year, year-over-year from last year. So just some significant trends that their team is doing a fantastic job of mitigating. They have a very active foster program and are always in need of more fosters. They've had some really positive outcomes, some good partners where they can transfer animals, but that will inevitably, what they asked of the commission last night was an increase, the ability to tap into some of their reserves to cover some costs that are coming from that. And so the conversation, you know, when they come around to doing their budget ask in October, is going to be around the realities of some of the particularly veterinary costs they're facing. They did bring on an in-house vet last year, which has been a fantastic savings, but still where they are having to go out. Care is more expensive and harder to find, as anyone with a pet is experiencing right now. So they are going to almost certainly ask all of the jurisdictions for some additional funds specifically around medical care and medical treatment, as they continue to see more and more animals and just don't have the veterinary capacity to, to do as much as they need to. So that's my report.
Thank you. Mayor Protam has a question for Councilmember Green.
Yeah. Interesting about the trends, did they give any reason to why those trends are up for kitties and puppies?
Yeah, a couple of reasons. The biggest is, it's very difficult to find, there, there are currently no low-cost spay-neuter clinics really near Thurston County, and so people who need spay or neuters need to go to a, a full veterinary clinic, which, again, are, if you've tried to get care lately, they're very busy, and those costs increase. So people are just less able to keep up with spaying and neutering pets. So that's a piece of it. They are also seeing, you know, some of it is an increase in, I think broadly the word abandonment. So folks, again, as they can't care for their animals the way that they felt like they could, they're seeing increasing abandonment. And then also, one thing they brought up, which I thought was interesting, is we've talked about families that are being impacted by immigration enforcement, sometimes pets are being left behind as folks are being abruptly removed from their living situation. So, you know, a lot of it, especially with the kittens and puppies, is the, is the spay and neuter issue, but there's, there's multiple reasons, and they don't expect any of those trends to, to change real soon. Although, they did share that there's two organizations looking for space in Thurston County to set up low-cost spay-neuter clinics. So that was really fantastic. They shared a little bit about what those folks need, so that if the cities are aware of 2,000 to 3,000 square feet with a lot of readily available parking and good utility access for people to do a spay-neuter clinic, they would be happy to connect realtors with potential spaces.
Well, I'm glad that I asked. That's very insightful. Thank you. The, for, for these two that are spay and neuter clinics, and I'm sorry to go along with this, but are they, are they just like, like is this support looking for space, or is it money? Because there is a part of me that's like, well, we're trying to figure out how to give Joint Animal Services money for a new building. So, can you?
Yeah, no, so really, it's, it's support for these organizations finding space. So these organizations are completely separate from Joint Animal Services, they're private organizations, but Joint Animal Services just would love to see them be able to operate, as would the veterinary community. So it was just kind of around, are there available spaces that maybe realtors aren't jumping right on, or are there spaces coming vacant really soon that might be a good fit? It was kind of just that help on some creative thinking around where, but yeah, no, no financial help, and, and the organizations are, are outside entities.
That's interesting. I, it makes me think of the correlation with the Community CAT program, too, and like, what is, you know, if, if there is an uptick in intakes that they're having through that as well, specifically when it comes to spaying and neutering. So I'd be curious about that also. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Councilmember Green? All right. Mayor Protam Nguyen.
Yeah, I have three. National Night Out, I, you know, when you make plans and then you're like, this sounds really good, and then the day comes and you have to do the plans, and you're like, ugh, why did I make those plans? You know? So it's not just for this event, but it's just a thing that happens sometimes. And, but there's this great thing that happens on National Night Out every year, is I start, I guess there's just this busyness in my schedule, and then I start feeling that way, and then I'm out at National Night Out. I'm out at National Night Out, and, and then I'm like, wait a second, after a few neighbors, I'm like, is that it? Are we almost done? I want more, you know? And it is just so much fun. And I will have to say, because I, in my day job, I work for the Department of Corrections, and, you know, so we have ample opportunity to partner with other police departments around the state, to go on different National Night Outs. I always go to the Olympia one. And, so anyways, the point is, I see how they're coordinated, and Rebecca and at OPD, and, you know, the team that she works with, I just assume, does such a fantastic job. And it's, not only is there lots of, you know, logistics guidelines written down so everybody knows where they're going, knows what to expect, and, you know, we get the pictures, we have the timer, but also the, the partnership with local law enforcement agencies or, or sort of adjacent agencies, and now some like private businesses to help sponsor, sponsor supplies for the neighborhood. It's just so great. And then, also, I love that, and I think this is a thought, but going to different housing types, like different types of neighborhoods, and you meet different people. It's so lovely. I think every single neighborhood, we went to four, was different housing types, and, and the neighbors were different. And then, and I don't know if this is actually a thought that Rebecca has, but I always, every time that I've been out, the neighborhood with all the desserts are at the end of the night, and I feel like she thinks of that, too. But it's just, everything is so planned out, highly impressed, couldn't recommend more, really, really enjoyed myself. So please send that thanks along, Chief. Okay, this chambers was looking, actually, quite a bit cuter, I'm sorry to say, a couple of weeks ago, with the young students from the Kato Japan delegation, and also joined by some Olympia, not just Olympia High School, but just Olympia area high school students that either went to Kato, from Olympia to Kato last year, or maybe they're studying Japanese, or they just have some interest in, in welcoming those, those Kato students here. But they came, did a tour of our, our city council, our city hall here, and we're just so engaged, and I love that we have such a strong sister-city partnership now. And just a reminder to councilmates that tomorrow night is their sayonara party, and it's at 5:30, and it will be at Firehouse 1. So, thank you, other chief, for, for, for opening that space there. I'm, I'm really, really excited about it. Maybe I'll see you there, too. And then, the PBIA, or the Parking and Business Improvement Assessment, this is a very interesting group that's not quite an advisory body to the city council, but in, in recent times, the PBIA, as it's called, collects rates, right, from ratepayers, so small businesses, or businesses in the downtown area, and then they take that money and they do things with it. And they decided, you might recall that they decided to press pause on the rate collection this past year, and then also just kind of assess as a body what, how they would like to move forward, right? And that would mean rate collection, like how they, how they want to look at, like, is there, is their rate collection up to date? They're thinking probably no, because it's the same one from 25 years ago, so they'd like to look at that. They also, I met with them last week, and they were very vocal about wanting more voice and, and just audience with the city council and not feeling that touch point there. I was saddened and, and surprised that they were surprised to hear how much city council values them. I, I mean, I certainly do, and, and they said, you know, ever since it has stopped being that there's a specific city council member assigned to the PBIA, as we were doing for all of the advisory bodies, they have just felt like, like they didn't have that relationship with council, and I think that's really fair. There's also been, you know, some turnover, some new faces, and economic development for the city, that's no news to anyone. And so when there are, when you're a, a board member or volunteer working with new people all the time, it can get, it can get exhausting, right? Because you have these plans of people, and then they leave, and then, and so I could see how that would contribute to a feeling of, of possibly not being valued. So they have before them a plan to use the rest of their collected rates money, about 15,000 to 20,000, to, to hire on a professional services consultant to look at the rate structure. And through a lot of conversations, and happy to take any questions about this later, but through a lot of conversations, I thought, you know what? Why don't the city pay for that? Like, why do we have to use our, our, our pool of money to pay for that? This is something that hasn't been looked at in all of this time, and so it would really mean something to, to the body for, for that to be paid through city funds. And so, something, something to talk about, and just wanted to keep you apprised of that. And also encourage you to, on, on all the nights that we're free, to spend some time with advisory bodies, and, and particularly knowing that the PBIA has these feelings. If you just sit in on a PBIA meeting, find an agenda that catches your interests, I, I know that they would really appreciate it. But we're still working on that, and I'm hoping to bring them into the fold of the broader advisory body evaluation work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Any questions or comments for Mayor Protam Nguyen? I'll just say that I'm intrigued by this request to have the city pay for it. I think that's a fair argument to be made. Can you say a little bit more, can you ballpark it about what kind of funds are we talking about here?
15,000 to 20,000, which, if given individually, we would all be very excited about, but as a whole, it's not as much, right? When we talk about the city budget.
Right. So, okay. Well, yeah, I'm supportive of exploring a further conversation around that. So, thanks. All right. Councilmember Gilman. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Almezzo and Espanol, lunch in Spanish here in the council chambers on the 31st. There was about 35 people who came, mostly city staff with a few family members. And we had the best time trying to struggle through a whole conversation with a Spanish fluent ringer at each table and some table topics. So I was really grateful. It was the Olympia Mosaic Group and the Committee on Diversity and Equity, our employee committee, who partnered up to make that, that event happen. I, I thought that was another way of making our, our statements into something tangible and helping to further our welcome to folks who come to seek services. So that was, that was a great lunch. At Night Out, I did Northeast Neighborhoods and it was interesting to me that there were three points where people have been doing emergency planning as, at a neighborhood level. And both, because generally it's a good thing when the Pacific Rim of Fire is lighting up with, you know, volcanic eruptions and earthquakes. But also several people voiced concern about FEMA being less likely to respond. Maybe we'd have to wait more days or maybe there'd be less resource coming. And so having more knowledge and having more phone tree sort of connections set up and knowing who needs extra assistance in, in an emergency. So there's, there's, the Northeast Neighborhood Association has a great packet and other folks are, are building similar packets. But I, I wanted to highlight that. That was an interesting part of, of the Night Out. And, and then CNA last night, the Coalition of Neighborhood Associations had a picnic sort of meeting. And to my experience, it was the best neighborhood associations conversation that I've had. And I think it, it got a lot closer to some of the hopes and frustrations that have been expressed here over the last few years, that we had a robust, lengthy conversation about changes in growth, about density and zoning with a multiple, multiple set of viewpoints around the table. And, and just really a helpful conversation with a lot of give and take. So that, that was a great meeting for me. And then Board of Health today, we, we had a similar presentation from Katie Strosick about overdose awareness day. And just to, to reiterate, Wednesday, the 27th, at Percival Landing from 2:00 to 7:00 in the afternoon, it's a chance to see memorials people have built and to pick up naloxone if you don't have one. And, and just support folks who are working hard to de-stigmatize substance use disorder. So that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? I'll just say that I appreciate that insight on neighborhoods doing emergency planning. That inspires me to think about the last time we've been briefed on continuity of governance and, you know, all of those sorts of things. So let's talk to the city manager about what we might do to make sure that we're prepared, you know, for those kinds of things. So, thanks, neighborhoods. All right. Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, a few items. So the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, TCMC, met quarterly because we've moved over to quarterly. We updated the ILA, the agreement, so that there no longer needs to be an ILA agreement per project. That was kind of a flaw in the original agreement where every single time we had to do a project, we had to bring back another ILA. It's all kind of contained in one ILA, which is wonderful. And it will save staff a ton of time and it'll get us moving along. We also got a budget update. We have, we're having a little bit of a budgetary delay because some stuff like the home energy score system is on pause by our neighboring jurisdictions. And so that's kind of shifting a lot of the dollars from this year to that, to next year. The dollars are still there. It's just, right now, we're going to have a little bit of a, what we have for the rest of the year, we don't have to spend as much, but next year we'll have more sitting. Because again, we're waiting on that. Some of it has to do, as you know, some of it has to do with legality in some jurisdictions. Some of it has to do with getting it in front of the other councils. And so we're kind of on a pause point right now with all of that. We're ready, you know, but we're, we'll be, we'll get there hopefully soon. And then on Saturday, I almost didn't put it on here until Councilmember Madron mentioned it to me. I, on Saturday, I went to the 50th anniversary of the Olympia Farmers Market, which was pretty cool. I'm always, I forgot it was the 50th anniversary. I just went there to go get stuff and then I was like, oh, look, cool hats and tote bags and stuff. So that was really cool to be there. It had a lot of cool stuff going on. I, those are my two items, but I do have a question. So, you know, the, you know, Councilmember Gilman mentioned this, but I'm wondering what else people were on minds of folks at National Night Out? Like what, what were the things that people were talking about or were on their mind when you were going from place to place? I'm always, I went, I really wish I had gone to it this year. I had other things going on, but I would, I'm always, I'm always curious, what are people talking about right now?
I heard a little bit about sidewalks. Yeah, that was interesting, specifically because we were in a neighborhood where the city of Tumwater was literally right there and there was a brand-new paved sidewalk.
Oh, so you were in like the checkers?
Literally on the line. So we heard quite a bit about, about that. So sidewalks did come up. I did hear mostly concerns around how things are going with addressing homelessness. And, but more so than not, people were asking me what was on our agenda and what were the things that were top priority for the city and things like that. So it was more so inquiry than folks, you know, having a whole lot of specifics that they wanted to share with me. There were a few individual situations, but I think those were mostly emotionally based and people just wanting to feel heard. So, but that's what I heard. I can't speak for anybody else. Yeah. Mayor Protam, win.
Yeah, okay. So something I'm going to call spam scams. So it is, yes, this actually did come up a couple of times where people wanted to know, and it had to do with like city services too. We actually, we actually had something go out on social media recently about the city's water quality, because I guess there's been solicitors going around and, I guess I would say incurring doubt in people about the city's water quality and things that they might have to buy to get better water quality, right? So, but yeah, there were a conversation, there was a couple of conversations I had with people about feeling like they were getting spammed with things and then, and then also that they might be getting scammed, but they weren't sure. And then, and then also had a couple of conversations about the jungle. So adding to the homelessness and housing. I also, very timely actually, housing affordability specifically for manufactured home parks. Yeah, I, that reminds me that I need to follow up with someone. But we also recently, you all remember, that as a council, we said that we were interested in learning more, right, when it comes to manufactured homes. And so, yeah. So that sort of reaffirmed that for me. Oh, and then, and then somebody grabbed, I wonder if they're listening right now? I doubt it. Anyways, but, but grabbed my shoulder and it was like, you're from the city council? You need to fix the jacuzzi here. The jacuzzi, the jacuzzi in the clubhouse. And I had to, and I had to let him know what city council does and what we don't do. But that was it.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Councilmember Cooper.
I actually had another question for Councilmember Vanderpool. It's okay if I, if you don't want to be put on the spot now and maybe it's a further briefing in the future, what are the other projects that the Climate Mitigation Collaborative is working on if the centerpiece is on hold?
Well, our retreat is coming up and that'll help define where we're going next. You know, we're still going through the, we have a lot of programs that we've already approved, such as Energize Thurston and stuff like that. We've been getting updates on that. Like, we're all like the main, most of the cities, we've gone through all that funding, but there are other smaller cities that are involved in it now. So they're like little updates. You know, I'm, I'm looking forward to our retreat, just to really get into where we're going because, you know, this time last year when I was the alternate, we had done the retreat already by now. And so I'm, it's really feels like, you know, it's, it's both waiting, it's both waiting for the energi, or the energy score to be done and also waiting for the other staff, the other jurisdictions to finish up their chapters of the comp plan. Because it feels like we're kind of delayed out right now on what's getting done. And it, and that's why we moved to quarterly really, because it, it's just, you know, it's, it's like we're kind of stalled out. And it, and it's kind of a bummer because I really want us to keep working on our goals. And I hear from folks and TCAT, I hear from members of the community all the time that, you know, they would, they would, they would go out of their way to get more funding, to get more stuff done. And I would support that. It's just a matter of where we are right now, it being regional, right? It's just, it feels like we're at a stall point. But I'm hoping once we're through this, once the comprehensive plans are done, caught up, once this home energy score is finally adopted, we can actually get to the next. Because, you know, the climate, our climate mitigation work has, you know, we have all of these different policies that we have to achieve, right? And we've, we've done a lot of good work in the past, but it's like, we need to get to the next stage. Because like I said last year in council chambers, when I was the alternate, we were discussing the next stage, right? We were discussing what policy, we, and we had us in different groups. I was standing here, there was a group over there, a group over there, and we were discussing what would be the, the thing that we would invest in then over the next few years. And so it's like, honestly, it's like, I, it's, we're stalled out.
I'm, I'm glad that you're so honest and so passionate and makes me know that you're the right person to be at that committee from Olympia right now. I think when, you know, you all are talking about National Night Out and what people are saying, and it's definitely something that I hear on community members' minds all the time is, where are we in regional climate policy? Because they expect it, just like we expect it from our neighbors. And we all know that collaboration, you know, kind of moves at the speed of trust. And as easy as it is to say when you're running for office, regional collaboration is the hardest thing about this job. And so thanks for sticking with us.
Yeah, it, it is. And, you know, and I would say that, I will say that there are, like, it is the hardest thing because, you know, Olympia can really push something. And sometimes, you know, I wish that because we're different jurisdictions, we would take on doing one thing and they would take on doing another thing, and then another city would take on doing another thing, and then we would all kind of exchange each other's policies so that we would get more stuff done. But that's not how it works a lot of the time. A lot of the times it, we end up in these positions where there are weird things that just block it up. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Before we move on, one other thing that I just thought of that did come up more than once was parking. That was the other thing that came up, both about a downtown parking garage and also concern about parking spaces in front of their homes. And a concern that as we eliminate residential parking requirements, that it could cause congestion in neighborhoods and perhaps not have enough spaces for residents and for visitors to their homes. And so there was a lot of concern around that as well. Yeah. And obviously we provided some clarity around what eliminating those requirements means and it doesn't mean that developers are going to not build any parking. So, but yeah, that did come up. All right. Councilmember Madron.
Just two quick things. Regional Housing Council, I think a lot of the things that happened in the last meeting have been peppered into other conversations. So I'll save some time and just say that one of the results of the retreat that we did recently is that we recently, we, we just approved a new vision statement for the Regional Housing Council. And it reads, everyone in Thurston County has stable shelter or housing that they feel is safe and the services they need to thrive. So that is the, much more comprehensive than what we had before. I think before it just talked about the services end of things. And then I'll just say that Thurston Regional Planning Council, we're hiring for an executive director. The job announcement went out, I think a couple of days ago. So if you know some nerdy planner type who is interested in an executive role, we're hiring. Oh, and one, I'll just say, I'm so bummed that I missed National Night Out. I got tickets to the Book of Mormon. It was only in town for two nights and one of those was a council meeting and the other one I did not flag that it is the annual day for National Night Out. So I missed it, but I do hope there were potato sack races.
No, I did not do a potato sack race this year. So we'll just have to look to the archives for the, for the old. All right. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? I hope you enjoyed the Book of Mormon. I've never seen it. Mayor Protam, win.
Maybe a little bit more context. Was this a faith service?
Okay, yeah, the Book of Mormon is a musical that I saw at the Washington Center. Thanks for that. I, that one does need a little bit more context.
Very important clarification. All right. And the city manager has no report for tonight, so with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.